In school. And in doing so, Tony said that he would approach it and speak with the superintendent and principal. And the school committee. And Tony. Did just that. And yesterday I attended. An emergency response training session. Put on by the Nahat Police Fire. And the school staff. That was just impressive as heck. It was really, really something. If the children were dismissed it in fact, Tony. If you wouldn't mind, just take us through that.
Uh, sure. You know, the school, the school conducts uh training on an annual basis. Emergency response training. Uh varies across the board from. Um, you know, a simple fire drill to a medical emergency to. You know, something more serious. And yesterday, no kids being in school. Was a perfect day for a training session. Um, that. Through the fire department and the and the police department. Along with the school uh staff and administration. They put together a great emergency response training that um. Simulated different types of events. Um, it gave the staff an opportunity to see how. You know, the how our fire department, how our police department respond to certain calls. Ignited a a a great discussion amongst the staff with our police department and. Um, and our fire department about different types of protocols. Um, and it was, you know. It was definitely um. It was, it was definitely impressive from, you know, my perspective, as as the chairman said as well from his. Um, in how? How prepared? And how cooperative our. You know, our di- our departments work together. Um, ensure, you know, making sure that. Um, you know, children's safety and school staff safety is. Um, you know. At the top of their priority and reassuring, you know, the staff on what to expect uh when those. Um, issues could potentially come up. Um, you know, how they respond and what to expect. So everybody's working in the same. Everybody's working on the same level and understand understands what to expect. So I will say that. You know. Everybody involved was. It was, it was just, it was a great experience from for me. I I, you know, I know the chairman agrees. Um, they all performed outstanding. We're truly. Truly lucky to have, you know, the staff that we do, both at the school and at those public safety departments. Um, so. Job well done.
It, as I said to Tony afterwards, we were chatting with the superintendent. You you couldn't help but come out of there with with a couple of takeaways, one of them being. The preparedness, not only to have the meeting, but what was taught in the meeting. And and then prevention. Put its head up and you you knew right away that that's the that was the idea of the meeting to begin with. And recovery, if in fact, anything should ever happen. And and God forbid that nothing will ever happen. But I want to thank you personally, Tony. You've you posted on that. And and it was great to get it done. And and Sergeant Mornau. Did an outstanding job in making the presentation on this. So just so that everybody knows, uh, this was really, really more than I expected. Thank you.
I I appreciate it. I I really can't take any. Any credit on that, though. That's, that's, you know, through the superintendent and the school committee. Through, you know, Chief Burlong, Sergeant Mornau and Chief Antrim. Um, you know, it's really, it's really because we got such a great. Like leadership, you know, at that level. So I pass all the credit back to them.
Thank you. Hey, one other thing. Everybody keeps asking. When is that um sewerage project going to be completed in the middle of the rotary? And no one knowing that that's not the sewerage project. It's that Emily. Yeah, transatlantic cable. And so I'm going to ask a resident engineer. To say a few words and kind of describe to us what's going on.
Uh, well, we we will be uh.
Talking about Josh.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I I don't think I know any more than any of you, but um it is a um a horizontal drilling out into the ocean. Um, to provide a conduit for um some human um intercontinental. Um. Communication cables, so from Europe. And um I think it comes up. Um, into a center on uh Commercial Street in Lynn. But yes, it has nothing to do with um any project from the hut.
Does anybody know where its connection is in Europe?
I do not know.
Wow. Well, they posted it in the item the other day. As to 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 when the hearing was or whatever hearing they're having. And what it was all about, but it just listed as a. Transax, trans, transatlantic. Crossing. From where you're talking about the rotary. Over to Europe.
Yeah.
Isn't it one day already?
I thought there was. Mark, do you know?
Yeah, there is. Uh, I was just hoping that they would uh. They'd land that uh closer into the hot territory. So we could collect some red for them, but apparently they just sidestep us a little. So, oh, wow.
Kind of amazing if you think about it, the cable running all the way to Europe.
Actually, I mean, it's, 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 it's. When it gets out about 12 miles while I was reading it. It only, they only covered with about two feet of um. Um, um, there. Well, when they, when they, when they put it in. So it's amazing. It's like, what an accomplishment.
Probably thirty five hundred miles of cable under the ocean.
Yeah. And Mark, what do they do? Do they, once they get to a certain depths? Below ocean, do they uh bring it back up and lay the cable?
Yeah, I think uh once it sort of gets out into international waters, it it sort of comes up. Um, it's, it's comes up actually to the surface and it appears to be a uh a ship. That sort of uh drags a uh. I don't know what you would call it, but a, you know, it digs a trench, basically. Uh, it's only a couple of feet deep and they lay the cable down and just fill over it. It's not, it's not very deep at all. Um, but I think they don't start doing that until they get out. Like fifteen and so miles.
Yeah, that's this, it's a high end project, that's for sure. Tony, you have anything you want to add?
Uh, just that. You know, our sewer job as far as. Um, the work going on under the Linways is complete. We're, we're fully on to the, the new sewer main. Um, it's a lot of restoration work happening now and will continue in the spring. I have a meeting with them tomorrow morning. I'll speak more to it during my uh town administrator report, but I think. They have to, I think they gotta go take a look. They're gonna dig um over by U-Haul. There's. Some water surfacing there. Uh, so they want, they're gonna check that to see if there's, you know, any sort of leak. Um. Caused by some settling, but. You know, for. For that to be the only. Follow up issue after the work we just did, that's a pretty. Successful operation.
Thank you. Thanks uh for explaining that. A lot, a lot of people will be happy to know what it is.
Well, we will. I spoke with our um PR firm today about um. Uh. Selectman Colin had a good idea of putting out a letter to the editor in the item. You know, thanking folks for bearing with us during the, you know, traffic impacts caused by our project and letting them know that. You know, our, our project is done at this point. So that should be going in the item soon and hopefully that'll. Clear up some confusion.
That's a great idea.
I mean, I, my suggestion was simply to. To thank the uh 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 Davis uh Land and Swamp Kickball. We use that road all the time. We had to put up with that. For about a year. So I think we. You know, there were a thanks for for putting up for, putting up with it and hopefully um. It will prevent anything from, uh, butcher from happening.
Excellent. Thanks, Mark. Okay, Board of Health, Tony.
Yep, uh. Our uh public health nurse, Anna uh McNicholas is on and I'm asking you to unmute.
Hello, how is everyone?
Hello.
So at our um flu vaccine clinic on September twenty eighth, we successfully vaccinated a hundred and ninety seven town residents and employees. Um, we did have a few leftover doses that we gave to Lynn to further their vaccination efforts since our town um residents are welcome at the Lynn clinics as well. Um, for those looking for COVID vaccines or boosters, including the new bivalent booster. Um, Lynn is actually hosting a vaccine clinic at Marshall Middle School on November ninth from three thirty to five thirty P M. They'll have the Moderna vaccine and the Moderna bivalent booster and flu shots as well. Um, and there's a phone number to call and make an appointment and I can make sure that all gets posted on the town website. And gets out to our residents as well. Um. Walmart, C V S, Walgreens and Village Pharmacy in Marblehead are all also giving out flu vaccines and the COVID. Initial vaccines and the boosters. Um, vaccines.gov is a really good place to start to look for a vaccine appointment if one of our town residents is looking for one. In terms of our COVID positive cases for October, we had twenty one positive cases. And for the last fourteen days from October sixteenth to the twenty ninth, we had a hundred and eight tests performed on our residents and ten positive cases. Which is down from the previous fourteen days. The only other thing to report is that I'm sure if you have seen the news or any social media is that there are a lot of respiratory viral infections going around, especially for children. Um, and bed space for children in hospitals is actually quite limited at this time. Um, the AAP actually released, um AAP is the American Academy of Pediatrics, released a letter. Um, for the Commonwealth in the Northeast, just that we're seeing such an increase in respiratory illnesses. Um, reminding people to vaccinate children greater than six months against influenza. And also against COVID nineteen. Reminding people, children five and older who had their primary series more than two months ago should receive an updated booster. You can get the COVID vaccine and the flu shot at the same time. Um, if you had a premature infant, to make sure to check in with their providers regarding specialty treatments offered for premature infants. And then just stressing hand hygiene, covering coughs and sneezes, cleaning high touch areas with disinfectant. And keeping children home from school, daycare and social gatherings if they're ill.
Excellent.
That was a great update. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for joining us, Anna.
Thanks, Anna.
Um, is, are there any um additional vaccination clinics planned for Nahat or are we anticipating any?
I would just, Lynn seems to be popping up a couple per month. Um, there was unfortunately one yesterday, so we're a day late for that one. So the only other one for November is next week. Um, I did play around on the vaccine.gov website just to sort of see what was available and there were quite a few available at Walmart and Lynn. Um, and all of our local C V S and Walgreens and it did not, most of them were available within the next twenty four to forty eight hours.
I I think with Josh, Josh might be asking, is there any opportunity at all to do it in the hut again?
I mean, I can definitely touch base with Lynn since they have the vaccine stored there and see what we can come up with. Um, definitely willing to try to get a vaccine clinic going in the hut if we think that there would be interest.
Is that what you were thinking, Josh?
It is what I was thinking, yes.
Yeah, let me do some work on that this week and I can get back to you guys.
Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, opening comments, Josh, if you would.
Sure, um. Glasses on here. Um. Curbside leaf pickup. Is occurring every Monday. Leaves must be in biodegradable bags only. No open barrels. No roots, no root balls or branches bigger than four inches in diameter. Bags must be out by seven A M on those Monday mornings. The compost area is open on Wednesdays and Saturdays from nine A M to three P M. Twenty twenty two resident sticker is required. Visit nahat.org for a list of accepted material. Uh, we have some board and committee vacancies. The Conservation Commission and the Cultural Council. Please send uh letters of interest to kaytaylor@nahat.org. Um, even if you've mentioned it to uh the town administrator or one of the selectmen, it's very important that you get the email to kaytaylor@nahat.org. Uh, we'll be accepting cultural council letters of interest until November fourteenth. Uh, and the reason for that deadline is that the um. The funding approval cycle with the state is coming up and um. They currently don't have a a quorum on that council, so um. Uh, we're, we're setting a deadline of uh November fourteenth for accepting letters of interest for that. Cultural Council. Um, and I just wanted to say the Conservation Commission is such an important commission. Uh, in the town in the hut, they do some really important work protecting our wetlands and our. Our wetlands buffer zones. Um. If you have any interest or expertise in that area, um, they could really use your help. Um. Yeah, so it's um, it's really an important uh. Uh, mission that Co- Conservation Commission has. So please consider if you're, you have an interest in. An aptitude in that area. Um, textiles and mattress band starts November first, twenty twenty two. Visit. Trash slash recycling page at nahat.org for instructions and information. And by the way, this is not in the hot uh trash pickup thing. This is a Massachusetts. Uh, wide change, so uh it's not unique to our uh. Our um trash pickup company or the town in the hut.
Uh, can I add something to that comment?
Sure.
Um, I know, you know, November first was yesterday and. I think a lot of folks knew that the deadline was coming up. Um, trying to, you know, get their uh mattress out on the curb before the deadline ended. Uh, we had. A few mattresses uh thrown in the dumpsters at the D B W yard. As well as other material that wouldn't be accepted in your curbside trash. Uh, those, just, just as a general announcement, you know, those dumpsters. Follow the same rules as your curbside collection. So, you know, if you, we, we won't be able to accept those in those dumpsters is either. Or so if you can't put it in your. Put it out on the curb, we can't accept them down there in the dumpster either. It's the same company. Um, that collects, curbside collects those dumpsters. So just wanted to. Add that note.
Thanks, Tony. Uh, the real estate bills will mail out November first, which was yesterday. And are due December first, twenty twenty two. Call the treasurer collector's office with any questions. Uh, general election is on Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty two. Polls open at. At Nahat Town Hall from seven A M. Uh, to eight P M. Visit the town clerk's page at nahat.org for early voting hours and information. Uh, Nahat Town Hall will be closed on Friday, November eleventh in observance of Veterans Day. There is a Veterans Day celebration on Friday, November eleventh at Veterans Memorial Park, starting at eleven A M. Veterans Memorial Park is the um, the park with the flag poles across from the uh Life Saving Station. Uh, trash recycling pickup. Delay the week of Veterans Day. Trash recycling. Pickup will occur on Thursday, uh, sorry. On Thursday, the eleventh will stay the same. If you normally have trash and recycling picked up on Fridays, then it will be moved to Saturday that week only. So no change for Thursday pickups. Friday is postponed by one day. Um, then Nahat Village Church Community Breakfast this Friday uh. At November fourth is starting at A M and will feature in the hot fire department. Breakfast is free and all are welcome. Fireman Frank Papalardo and Matt Canty will be at the breakfast to talk about fire safety and prevention. They will also show footage from the Maple Ave. Fire that occurred back in December of twenty twenty one and talk about their hero. Her, excuse me, her rescue of the owners of that house. Carolyn. June Zillo Comer and her husband Michael. Also Carolyn is making a special trip from Ohio. To be at the breakfast and to share her experience and to express her immense gratitude to these first responders. Um. There's also um upcoming some recognition of these two. Um, firemen. At a state level coming up. I forget the details in a couple of weeks. Is that right, Tony?
Yeah, it's uh Wednesday, November eighteenth in Worcester. Uh, Governor Baker will, will be awarding both of these firefighters. Um. A uh. A special award firefighter of the year award. Um, that will be heading out to, to be a part of that event. Very special day. And yeah, again, you know, Friday. Friday's community breakfast at eight A M. Uh, that's going to be a really special. Uh, presentation with Carolyn joining uh both firefighter Canty and Papalardo. Uh, so I encourage anyone um that. Might be hungry that morning to uh join the breakfast and um. Like I said, it starts at eight up at the village church.
Excellent. Okay, moving right along, new business. Mark, would you take? The controls?
Uh, sure. We have some event requests approved. I move that board selectmen vote to approve the annual. Lions Club Turkey Shoot on Saturday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty two. From ten A M to P M. You have the D P W on Flash Road.
Seconded.
Uh, so.
Seconded discussion?
Yeah, the Lions Club will host their annual Turkey Shoot. It will be also serving hot dogs, donuts, cider and coffee. Uh, turkey tickets are three dollars each. There's also a raffle for a large turkey. Those tickets are. Five dollars each or twenty dollars for five.
Just made seconded discussed, uh, roll call vote.
Josh, enter mine.
Mark, call mine.
Gene, Canty, I.
We have a bid to approve. I move that the board of selectmen vote to award the coastal engineering bid to sustainable coastal solutions.
Seconded.
Discussion. Tony, you want to? If you would, take us through this?
Here, uh, we. We put out a uh procurement for coastal engineering services. Um, about a month or two ago. It was a qualitative analysis, so which means. Um, a committee, which was myself, Zach Taylor, the D P W superintendent and uh Vicki Masson. Um, uh consultant of ours. Um, reviewed the qualitative responses. First, before opening any price uh proposals. And we um scored those responses based off of the criteria listed in the R F P. Um, sustain, sustainable coastal solutions scored the highest. Um, and then as far as price proposals, which is basically on an hourly rate. Uh. They were um right in the middle. So. Um, very pleased to be awarding it to them. What this, the reason we went through this process um in Massachusetts. You're not required to procure engineering services of this kind. However, we. Um, in order to utilize federal funds from FEMA. Uh, for actually still federal funds from storm damage occurred from the twenty eighteen storms. You have to meet federal procurement rules as well. So uh by. Completing the process tonight, we check that box and we can make some significant progress on some of those projects in the, in the, you know. Over the next year and the coming months.
Excellent. Any discussion?
Just looking at the uh. Just looking at the evaluation matrix, it looked like um sustainable coastal solutions uh was. Uh, the top choice in almost every category, so. Sounds like it was a pretty clear cut choice by, by the panel.
Yeah, yeah, it was. Excellent. Okay, roll call vote.
Josh, enter mine.
Mark, call mine.
Gene, Canty, I.
We have some minutes to approve. I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the board of selectmen meeting minutes. From July twenty ninth, two thousand twenty two and July fourteenth, two thousand twenty two.
Seconded.
Josh, you have you, you've discovered you have them and.
Yes, I, I, I did find them and I read them and.
No further discussion?
Mr. Chair, that was June twenty ninth. I think Mark said July.
That's it, July fourteenth, June twenty ninth and July fourteenth.
Thanks, Mark. Roll call vote.
Josh, enter mine.
Mark, call mine.
Gene, Canty, I. Ongoing business. Um, Josh, I think you wanted to talk a little bit about rights of way.
Yeah, um, we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting and um I asked to add it to the agenda. Tonight, really just to. Kind of keep our feet to the fire, our collective feet to the fire on this issue. Um, I really want to get to the point where these rights of ways are marked so that. Anybody of the general public. To whom these rights of way belong uh can walk along and. Know where they are, basically. That's. That's my sort of short term goal. So. That's really what I, why I asked to put it on here. So. You know, we, we talked a little bit last time about. Um, putting together a, a committee or, you know. How can we sort of? Accelerate this process that, that's, um, you know, I know a lot of progress has been made, but. I just want the public to be able to be aware of where these rights of ways are, recognizing the fact that, you know, they're not all accessible at this point and um. There are surveys that need to be done. Uh, but I just wanna. Sort of. Break any log jam that might exist and and um push this along. So that's, that's the reason I. Um, asked that added to the agenda tonight and um. You know, I don't know if we need to discuss it any further. Um. I don't know if. You know, Gene and Mark, if you had any more thoughts on. What might be the best approach to? Um. You know, picking up the pace on this, basically.
Well, first I would look at the funding source for this. It's going to require some funds. Um, there may be some outstanding community preservation funds on the books, Tony. I'm not sure you could look into that. Uh, you know, if there's not, then perhaps we could um. Prepare an application for this year's town meeting. To at least to, you know, address it year by year over the next couple of years.
Where, where was, thanks, Mark. Where is, so is there a log jam?
No, it's not a lot. Uh, it just needs to get done. It's all.
Yeah, maybe, maybe log jam wasn't the right term, but uh. Um, you know. I just like, I, you know, my immediate goal is, is having them be identified and so. You know, hoping we can take some actions towards, towards that specific goal. And I know, I know a lot of them have been mapped um from previous efforts and in, in um. Sheila, the assessor, has. A lot of them ma- uh marked on her maps, but. Um, I think it's important for the public to know where those are.
So, um, Mark and I, uh, sorry, excuse me, uh, Selectman Colin and I, uh. You know, looked through some old uh runaway files over the last couple of weeks. He came into the town hall and showed me some stuff that. You know, had been done when he was the town administrator and through the planning board and I think funded through C P C. Um. Except, you know, breaking the town out into different sections and um. You know, cert. Just the tip of the iceberg really started moving along with Little Nahat and maybe one or two sections of Big Nahat. Um. I think that. I think Mark is right that, you know, identifying. Identifying, you know, a cost on this and then a funding source. I, I'm, to be honest, I'm afraid that um. You know. At a committee level or at a volunteer level, we're going to continue at the same pace that we're on. And or, you know, and and not really advance it in the way that you're suggesting. I think, you know, bring in a con- a consultant. To look at the map. I think, you know, bring in a con- a consultant to look at the mapping that has been already been completed. Um and to, you know, maybe come up with a plan for us that. Organizes, you know, the rights of ways that are out there. In some sort of fashion and helps us kind of helps guide us along the along the path of what you want to accomplish. You know, as we talked about the last meeting, every single one of these things are um. Unique and different in nature, you know, is it a right of way, is it just town land, um you know. Is it encroached upon, does it lead to anywhere, you know, what is the, what's the goal of what we're trying to do and. You know, how complicated is restoring that open space or town land or public land um? And what that would entail, so I, you know, I think, I don't know, Mark, I'm sorry, selectman Cullen, if you have any thoughts on. What type of firms would be able to assist us in something like that? And then, you know, further, I think. We talked a little bit about the town and land study committee or, you know, formalizing. Um a group or a subcommittee of, it could even be a sub, a subgroup of of the town administrator even. Um that, you know, works directly with that consultant to come up with a report with a, you know, an action plan. That could be, you know, presented to the board of selectmen.
Yeah, I think it's multi-disciplined um um. Uh work that needs to be done, certainly in engineering planning firm, uh there's planning and engineering and surveying capabilities. Um you also need some legal um um assistance. At some point, that could be two different that work together. Um but I, it's probably not a bad idea, plus for a firm to command to take a look at. Uh what we've done to date and perhaps um suggest uh a path forward. I think you're right that whether it's like open space or another committee or a combination of committees. Once, once they're identified, once they're located, um you know, what is our mission here? Uh what are the criteria um in terms of how the town is going to act and what we're going to do with that property? Um that's a whole different matter, um but, you know, identifying them and locating them. Um is the first step. And then, once we do that, I think local committees can decide how the town wants to um. Or suggest ways how we move forward and in utilizing these these rights of ways of open space.
Yeah, doesn't doesn't the planning board have a a a treasury chest of information on this? I mean, they've been working on it now for at least the last five to seven years, maybe ten.
I think that they were heavily involved in that, in the, you know. The Little Nahat process and getting and starting to get into Big Nahat, but I think, you know, I know Dan and I. Spent some time on the Little Nahat rights of ways, you know, right before COVID hit and then, you know. You know, doing sidewalks and things of that nature, and then it kind of got put on the shelf when we went through COVID and. Um it's starting to kind of resurface as an important issue for us now, especially with the development of the open space plan. Um and there's probably grants that we're eligible for, you know, because that plan has been completed. Um that could help us with this. So, um you know, I just, I think that. You know, quite honestly, we have, um we're doing a better job of bringing back properties that. Um, you know, have been neglected or um. Uh or, you know, needed more maintenance, you know, we're we're doing a good job of making headway there. Um it's just a matter of resources and how it kind of lines up with the other priorities, so. I I think it, I think, you know, getting some quotes. You know, from a firm that might be able to help us with this might be the first step and then we could tie that into a CPC application. And kind of let it, let it make progress on its own. I'm afraid that um under another committee. Or, you know, in the list of all the other priorities on mine and Zach's um plate. It'll, you know, progress won't move as fast as I think, you know, selectman Antrim is. Looking for, so that's why I think, I think bringing in outside firm might be the best way to maintain that progress.
So, why don't we do that?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, we're having a discussion about it now, so I I don't know, what do you think, selectman Antrim?
Yeah, I mean, I think whatever it takes, and I'm glad you brought up the um, I know the open space did address. Of the public rights of ways in in their um, in their recently approved plan and um. So uh I'm glad you brought up that prospect of the possibility of being some grants that might be applicable. Um in, you know, as we discussed last time and this time. There are definitely some complications with this, you know, they're not all the same, there's. There's surveys that need to be done and legal issues to deal with, but um. You know, I'm just really trying to, you know, keep our collective feet to the fire on this and uh. And um see what it brings home, so if if a consultant um is sort of the. Uh an expedient um way to get this done, I'm all for it.
And I would add. You know, some sort of service as part of that scope would be to maybe improve our. Uh webpage related to rights of ways like you brought up, you know, in the last meeting. Um, you know, not only identifying them on the ground, but, you know, coming up with a. Intuitive way to present them on the on our website would be.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, and um. And, you know, as we're discussing this, I've been thinking that um, I think I'll take the task of reaching out to the town of Rockport and. Seeing how they got a grip on the on the very same issue, um I sent you guys a link to to their webpage. For this aspect, but what made me think of Rockport was, you know, a few years back, just walking around the town and. How done a really great job of marking all these right rights of ways, so they're readily identifiable. So so I'll I'll reach out to them and see, you know, if there's any. Learnings that that would be helpful to us as well.
Okay, thank you, Josh, uh any other comments? So summarizing that, what will we be doing, Tony?
Well, it sounds like Josh is gonna reach out to Rockport and then um I'll wait to hear back from him and then. You know, from there, we might be. Gearing up for some sort of CPC applicant grant application. That maybe it could be paired with an open space grant um. Yeah, I I'm not, I'm not. I'm not super familiar with the open space grants that are now available to us because that plan is completed. So that's something I, you know, could maybe work with the Open Space Plan Committee um. And work together on something like that.
And Tony, um, I was just gonna add, could. Could Tony, maybe you take the action to get in touch with Lynn Spencer, Chair of the CPC. Committee, because I I seem to recall that there was some unused funds currently, you know, from a few years back for this. Or or I can, I could reach out to Lynn as well, but.
Yeah, uh honestly, she'll she'll probably ask Allison uh for, you know, uh updated numbers, so I could just go straight to Allison on it.
Okay.
And then, you know, it's a little bit of digging, looking looking into the uh book to see what. You know, the actual language was that those those monies were authorized for, there's there's definitely a lot of. Um little pockets of unused open space and trail related money. Some of it's for signage, some of it's for surveying, you know, so it it kind of depends um. I don't think there's enough in there to accomplish what what we want to do, but. So we might, we might be, you know, looking to submit an application anyways, I will find out from Allison though, where we are with that.
Yeah, thanks.
You know, what what you might need, Tony, uh Josh, is a, at least a draft scope of services um. That you could ask some firms to take a look at, uh to try to get a handle on what we're talking about in terms of cost. Because I'm sure the community preservation committee will be looking and the finance committee will be looking at what's the basis of our number. Um so uh I'd be, I'd be certainly willing to work with you on that, Josh and Tony if you want. And me and Dan too, because a lot of it, it's gonna be legal services also.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, moving right along, uh Tony, you wanna give us a briefing on the status of the mass D E P? The consent order?
Mm-hmm, yep, in twenty twenty-one, the town was issued a consent order for a mass D E P of of the. Ninety percent of that, of the details of that order are dates and progress points related to the. Linway Sewer Main project, uh we've obviously met a lot of those um. We've met a lot of those already at this point, um where we're now.
Somebody out there's got their mic open. Hello?
Yeah, I'm.
I'm I'm getting some feedback too, I have a, I'm gonna unplug this auxiliary speaker I have and see if that helps. Um, why don't you proceed and see if that echo goes away?
Okay. I, uh what I was saying was uh ninety percent of that consent order we've accomplished at this point. Because we're pretty much done with the um the Linway Sewer Main project. The other part of that consent order is um creating a plan. Uh capital plan related and designing um solutions related to inflow and infiltration. Uh I I in our sewer system, uh we've been working together, myself, Zach. Um Vicky Masson and her um colleague, uh um Eileen. Uh on reviewing some of the data that was originally presented to D E P in twenty seventeen related to our I I. Amounts, um adding in the new layer of data that we got from the. Camera and cleaning work that we did of all of our sewer pipes in town. And approaching D E P with um some next steps. So we have a draft of that, um our next step is to schedule a call with D E P. And hopefully uh make some progress there and. You know, meet all of our requirements related to the consent order.
Thanks, Tony. Any uh questions, discussion? Okay. Preserving East Point. Do we have any activity at all, Josh?
Um there um was recently a little bit of activity um on October thirty-first. Uh there was a court hearing um. On the Article ninety-seven case, there's sort of two prongs of that, one is the. Portion, let's, I'm gonna put it in layman's terms that so that I can understand. Um the the question of did Northeastern uh dedicate this land to public use and conservation? That's the portion that um Judge Carp ruled no. Um and then the second sort of branch of that Article ninety-seven case is. Something called promissory estoppel, which is um sort of. In understanding that this would remain as um open space conservation land. So, for example, when the town invested in building Lodge Park, um it was on the assumption that. The adjacent land would remain as open space, so um the. The um the meeting. On the thirty-first, uh the judge said, okay, um give me all your. Information related to promissory estoppel by December fifth and we'll have a hearing sometime in January, so um. That's where that schedule is looking and and I mentioned at the last. Board of Selectmen meeting that we'd be appealing the um the other portion of. Uh the Article ninety-seven case and um so that is on hold until we get through this promissory estoppel. Phase um and then again, just as a reminder, all these legal proceedings are um. Are funded by private donations, so no, no cost to the taxpayers.
Could you just briefly, once again, define what an estoppel is?
Uh no, I can't because I don't really know.
I can jump in here, I can jump in here.
Dan can.
Yeah, it's a promissory estoppel is really adjunct contract law. It basically means that one party was promised something and they had a reasonable reliance on that promise. And it could have been something like dedicating land or some, you could think of any fact pattern. And then somewhere along the line, um uh the the promisor decided to basically renege on the promise or. Act contrary to the promise that would detrimentally affect the person to whom the promise was made. So it's all, it's fairly first year law school um contracts, so but um so what they're trying to say here, as far as I can tell, is. That somewhere along the line, uh Northeastern made some form of a promise saying, well, if we're gonna, we're gonna allow you guys to stay or use this property. Um uh for some reason or another, and now they're essentially reneging on that promise. And what what uh we're trying to say is, well, uh you cannot recognize, you are, you are stopped from reneging on that promise. Because we are now being uh, we're being affected detrimentally. So uh you cannot go back on your promise is what it comes down to. I I can put out there that this act, this case made front page news in our weekly lawyer newspaper. Um so one thing I can tell you is that, based on your most recent comment, I think it was Gene. Uh there was a comment made by Northeastern's attorney that this is a waste of taxpayer dollars. And I think I just heard someone say that, I always understood that this has nothing to do with taxpayer dollars. So if you, I actually went to law school with the with the reporter who reported on this. So if you want me to, I can reach out to Eric Berkman, let him know that that was a mistake, not on his part, he was quoting a Northeastern attorney. If you think that would be helpful.
I think anything and everything is helpful, it's just how we deliver, I guess.
Okay, well, I'll talk to Tony about that tomorrow.
Okay, Mark, Josh.
So um, on a side note, did me unplugging my speaker get rid of that feedback problem?
Think so.
Darn it, because I can barely hear without it. I'm gonna plug it back in and try to move it a little further away from our microphone. Because without it, it's really hard for me to hear. Um, let's try that, um. I guess the only thing I have to add is that um. The the eminent domain case, the so-called eighty A eminent domain case um. Which is completely independent from the Article ninety-seven is proceeding along, that's still. Uh in the discovery phase in which um um. Decisions being made about who will be deposed in that case, uh so that's sort of. Moving along very slowly uh through the court system, sort of independent of the Article ninety-seven case.
Hey, Dan, thanks for jumping in there and I'm sorry I don't ask you to jump in more often, but.
Hey, listen, half my job, much of the time, is just to be quiet, just sit in the room. You have to know, well, you have to know when to talk, when to shut up, so I often pray for the the latter.
I've been told that, hey, just one other thing um under ongoing business. Um the Housing Plan Advisory Committee, can we discuss that at this point, just the the basics of it? Tony?
Sure, sure, every, almost everyone, we're just waiting on an appointment from uh the housing authority. But all other seats have been appointed, um we initiated a um introductory email. With the staff over at the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, who will be providing technical assistance. Uh throughout the process of developing the housing production plan and developing um zoning related to. Um, Chapter Three A M B T A communities. And the first meeting, I believe, is gonna be Wednesday next week, um the ninth. Just double check my calendar that that's the ninth. Wednesday the ninth, um, at 6:30 via Zoom, stream it to our local, uh, cable TV as well. Um, but that will be the first meeting, the kickoff meeting, to kind of, you know, introduce the committee members to each other, introduce them to the MAPC, uh, folks. Um, you know, discuss the scope, the schedule, next steps, upcoming process, things of that nature. So, uh, tune in next week on Wednesday.
Mark?
No, I look forward to, um, participating in this very important topic and, uh, looks like we have a good, uh, committee, uh, to get started, and everybody seemed very, uh, very, um, eager to get going. So I look forward to our meeting next Wednesday.
Oh, a lot of confidence in, in the way this is gonna go forward. Um, I won't bring it up, but I haven't seen any coyote activity. Is there anything we have to report?
Uh, not, no new, no new, um, reports have come in. I'm, I'm usually alerted if any, um, reports are brought into the police station and passed on to our, uh, dog officer, animal control officer. So no new reports to, to provide at this time.
Okay, thanks. Town Administrator's Report.
Um, on the agenda here, I have, um, town fiber cable project. So this is a different fiber cable project. Um, this is funded through, uh, state funding and the, this, the goal of this project is um, twofold. If, A, it's gonna connect all of our public buildings with a fiber cable, which is gonna provide us, um, redundancy, it's gonna provide us resiliency, allow us to share internet and, um, through one service provider, uh, our, uh, provide some backup um, storage in other, in other buildings. Um, so, you know, God forbid, anything happened in one building, um, any data on, you know, the server could be backed up to another building. Um, it'll also, uh, help us with our police communications project, which we got funding at a previous town meeting, a couple, couple meetings ago. Um, where we hope to, uh, install some new hardware around town that helps, um, connect the repeaters and antennas that are involved in that police radio communication project, uh, to improve coverage across the, across the island. So we're, we're meeting, I think Friday, I'm meeting with, uh, Chief Berlong and the folks from Contract about, uh, the schedule of installation of that cable. And I know, I think the goal is to have it done before the end of the calendar year.
Um, Tony, you, you asked me a couple weeks ago if I check in with some local, uh, residents about the possibility of using several part of their property to put, uh, a antenna of some sort. And I've made some initial contact, but could you send me a, a photo of the equipment that, uh, we're looking for them to install?
Yeah, I'll, I'll probably, I could ask for that on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the first step would really be, you know, inviting, inviting the contract to come out and, and do like a test of coverage, to even see if, you know, that area, that spot would be viable. And then the next step would be, you know, discussing some sort of agreement with the resident. Um, it may turn out that it's unnecessary to connect that far, so. Uh, but I'll get more information on Friday.
All right, thank you.
Um, next is sewer project. We talked about that. Um, another addition to that conversation is, uh, a meeting with, um, I have a, I have a bi-weekly progress meeting with, uh, Geo So and Wright Pierce tomorrow morning. I'll get some updated schedules. I, I believe that later this week or early next week, they'll be beginning the project of installing the bypass on Ward Road, uh, which is gonna allow us to complete, you know, to make progress and complete the Ward Road pump station work. Uh, so what they'll be doing is installing a T uh, on the main after the pump station, so that when we begin work, we can bypass the entire station, shut it down, clean it out, reinstall new equipment in there, and then, um, you know, um, undo the bypass. So, and, and that'll, that'll be permanent. We'll always have it for, you know, any future need. Um, they're also working on removing material from the compost yard. I've made abundantly clear to them that that needs to happen. Um, you know, ideally before the end of the calendar year. I'll be speaking to them about that, uh, tomorrow as well. Uh, paving. Seen rope, seen that many of our roads have been milled. Um, we're hoping that the paving, uh, will be completed by the end of next week. Uh, that's weather permitting. That's really fast schedule. Um, typically, you know, you don't see, uh, the paving, paving companies, uh, move that fast. So I'm, I'm, I'm optimistic, but us will hopefully meet that schedule. Um, right now, it looks like the Little Nahat Road, uh, Nahat Road, Howe Road area will be completed on Friday. Um, on Monday.
Friday tomorrow, you mean?
What's that?
Uh, Friday of this week?
Friday of this week is the plan. Um, on Monday, they'll be getting over to Walton Road, um, Pond Street Court, Intervale Road, Summer Street Court, and, uh, La Pae Yep. And then Tuesday, the Hot Road and Valley Road. Again, you know, that's a pretty aggressive schedule. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if that extends into the week, but if we get, if all that pavement gets laid down by the end of next week, uh, that's a really quick, um, efficient job. So I'll be very pleased with that.
Yeah, a lot of, uh, it's a lot of area.
Yeah. Uh, much needed. And then mosquito control, I want to give an update. Every, every fall, we try to do some work related to stormwater control and mosquito control, keeping our, uh, ditch systems flowing. Um, we've done some work on the golf course, if, if anyone has seen, um, recently, uh, removing fragmites along the ditch on the sixth hole and around Bear Pond, which is gonna help us help provide us some, and I think Zach has already been down there working on restoring the slope of Bear Pond that's been eroding because of, uh, stormwater. Um, so they, they were in town last week, I believe. I don't, I think they're all done for this year. Um, but, you know, again, um, a ton of work at no, you know, at really no cost to the town. It comes out of our cherry sheet. Um, our funding from the state that goes, it goes right through, passes through the town to mosquito control, Essex County mosquito control. Uh, but, you know, it's all based on population, and so the town in Nahat gets a great deal from mosquito control. Uh, because, you know, we don't, we get probably equal work as every other town, but probably put in the least amount to Essex County mosquito control. So the great, uh, great work for us. Um, and, you know, keeping on them every fall is, is is the key, uh, to keeping progress going there, so.
Yeah, uh, Tony and, and to the board, you know, I just, I'm so happy to see this as an ongoing annual effort, um, after some years where no progress was being made. So the area that Tony just referred to, where the fragmity was referred to, that area was just dredged. Um, that ditch was just dredged last year by mosquito control, but it's an ongoing maintenance thing, so. Um, and it, it gets choked with the fragmity, so I was really happy to see, um, the progress that, that was made there. And, um, I happened to be down by Bear Pond today, and Zach Taylor, our DPW superintendent, was there working with, with his crew and, um, as you mentioned, Tony, they're doing a great job, um, you know, repairing the damage to the embankment of, of Bear Pond. Um, Zach kind of walked me through, uh, what he had in mind and, um, just reminded me like what a, I know we've, we've said this before, but, um, I'm very grateful for the, for the job that EPW has been, been doing, you know, I, um, I just feel like the town is, is looking good and, um, they're very, most importantly, they're being very proactive, um, on a lot of these things. So I personally agree with all the work they're doing.
I agree. I agree. By the way, what, what, what fragmites in normal translation? Bull rushes?
Yes, rushes. I speak Latin, uh, you know, when I'm not on a meeting, I speak a lot of Latin.
Uh, and then lastly, internally, uh, you know, it's November 2nd, so we, in our, you know, department head meeting that we have every two weeks, we talked about, you know, approaching the end of the calendar year, getting ready for budget, getting ready for capital needs, looking at CPC requests and things of that nature. So, uh, we had a long discussion about, you know, that process and, you know, uh, annual reports that we put a book together at the end of the year. So it's, uh, that season is upon us. Um, so we're, uh, we started having that, those discussions this past week.
Yeah. Hey, so you reminded me, Tony, of something that I wanted to add to the agenda, but forgot, uh, when I made my smittle. But a couple years back, you had, um, put together a schedule, a bed, a budget preparation schedule. Uh, I thought it was excellent. Um, maybe we can look at that next meeting, um. It really helps, uh, the collaboration between FinCom and the Board of Selectmen. I know there's a few folks on the FinCom that are relatively new. And, um, you know, we don't want to put them in the position where they're pinched for time, you know, it always seems like they're pinched for time, um, you know, as town meeting approaches. So, um, I think that plan that you, that you laid out a couple of years ago would be nice to take a look at the next meeting and uh, make sure we're meeting our commitments, um, and, and helping FinCom, you know, be, have the time and resources to, um, review the budget.
Certainly.
Thanks, Josh. Great suggestion. Okay, Citizens Forum. Do you have anybody out there, Tony?
If, if you would like to speak, just raise your hand. Sharon Hawks, our town librarian, let me unmute. Hi, Sharon.
Hey, everybody. I just wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday is Indie Author Day, where you get an opportunity to meet and greet your local authors, hear excerpts of their work, and purchase your next great read. It's a fun time to, um, hear some books from people who are passionate about writing, but, uh, very often are just, uh, beginner writers. Some of these people have been actually writing for years, but, uh, publish under small, um, uh, publishing houses or self-publish. So it's really exciting to hear from them, to, to hear their works. This has been a popular project every year. This is our sixth Indie Author Day. Um, we have one Haunter, Dr. Terrence Murphy is coming back with his latest. And so you'll have to come and listen to him read his excerpt, buy his book, and make sure you're not in it, because he writes about a community that's very similar to Nahat. So I hope you'll come. That is free, and you'll have the opportunity to purchase books or have them signed. That's this Saturday, November 5th, four o'clock at the library. Thanks very much, Tony.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you. Anybody out there, Tony?
I have a feeling Marilyn Mahoney is trying to, uh, get in, based on what I'm being there on the screen. But it doesn't seem to be working.
If anyone, if anyone out there wants to participate in Citizens Forum, just, uh, unmute yourself, announce your name and your address.
Is Marilyn still there?
It looks like she's having trouble connecting.
Yeah, we'll give it a minute or two.
Um, did we, did we say anything about, uh, Christmas Parade fundraiser? I saw it was on the message board and it's been out on Facebook.
Uh, you did not, so.
Let me, let me take a look real quick while we wait. Um, the Nahat, uh, Annual Christmas Parade Fundraiser. Um, it's, uh, seven day cruise for two from Boston to Bermuda. Raffle tickets are being sold, ten dollars per chance. Cash or Venmos accepted, and tickets can be purchased at the Nahat Police Station. Upcoming seasonal events, um, Saturday, 12:03, Christmas Tree Lighting Event at the Town Hall. Uh, 5:45 PM. Saturday, 12:10, Christmas Parade, Parade Tides fundraiser, um, beginning at 6:00 PM. And then Saturday, December 17th, will be the Christmas Parade from 4:45 to 5:45.
There you go. Okay. No luck, Josh?
Um, I just, uh, it looks like they're just not able to connect. I can see Marilyn's hand moving around, but, um, better luck next time, I guess.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I think she's connected now. Marilyn, do you, I ask you to unmute if you wanna, you have anything to?
She's still smiling. That's a good sign.
All right.
All right.
She knows how to hold on to us.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we did, we ready to close it out?
I moved, I moved to a chair.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Josh, answer my.
My turn, all right.
Dean Canty, thanks, guys.
All right.
Thanks.
Good night.
Have a good one.